Good evening, everyone. I'd like to open the meeting of July sixteenth, twenty nineteen, and we'd like to call the meeting to order and stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. And so the record reflects those who are present, I will now call the roll. Village Attorney Seraphin. Village Manager Benton.
Here.
Councilman Brady.
Here.
Councilman Melz.
Here.
Councilman LaFredo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Birch.
Present.
Mayor Wagler. You have quorum.
Thank you. So tonight, we have a special House of the Month presentation to the Sople family. Are they here? If they're not here, should...
Well, we'll make sure that they get them.
Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
Should they have them? Okay. Thank you very much. The Sople family's address is eighty-eight Northwest Hundred and Eleventh Street. This beautiful home that you see before you in this lovely picture. How beautiful. So, thank you very much to the Sople family and congratulations to them.
Next item is the presentation of the new e-permitting system by the Building Department.
Yes, Mr. Rambo.
Yes, good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, Mr. Benton, Mr. Seraphin. Today, following a directive that was issued to us by our village manager, Mr. Tom Benton, I would like to give you a brief presentation on the electronic permitting software that we have upgraded to. It's going to be a great asset to our residents, our business owners, and contractors. With this program, the applicants are going to be able to submit electronic permitting. Plans will be able to review it electronically and issue the permits electronic. They will be able to make payments electronically. And basically, everything is going to be done through the computers if they wish. They also have the option to come to our office and do it the way that we have been doing it up to now. With that said, Arlenis Iberia, which is our permit clerk supervisor, thank to her and to Lassero Remond that we were able to put everything together to be able to work the way that it's working today. So, with that said, she's going to give you a brief presentation of how the system works.
Good evening, Councilor. Yes, the presentation is pretty much how to apply for a permit online. So, this is our permit access portal. When Enervate upgraded, they actually renamed it to the self-service because this site can actually provide the customer, the resident, or the contractor the opportunity to apply online by themselves. So, to apply for a permit, a login is required. And I am going to attempt to do the actual submit all the permit using one of the village's properties. So, if you have any correct email format, you can let me know. And a simple password would do. And this feature popped up. Now that I'm logged in, I can apply for a permit. Just going to show them an alphabetical order, not all of them. So, we'll go down to all. And we're going to be doing a roof permit. I'm going to scroll down a bit here. We're going to be applying for a tile and flat, which is the majority of the roofing permits we got. I'm going to select an address. It's a very simple, very simple permit. Right here, we're going to put the address, nine three oh one North East Second Avenue. And all the addresses with similar number will appear. We're going to add nine three oh one North East Second. So, it's added the address, the parcel, or also known as the folio number, and we're going to select next.
And so you see right here, it says add location also. So, that's in the event that you have a condominium or anything like that and you need to add additional information, like the unit number and so forth, then you can go into that area, be able to do that.
And this is step one. Obviously, you can see at the top, there is about seven steps. Very simple, and the last one being just a summary. The permit type, roof, tile, flat, you can change it in the end, but that's not the permit when you log in. The description of work, we're going to put here, re-roof, tile, and flat. Just to give you a filling out a regular permit application. Square foot, square feet is twenty-five hundred, and the validation is twenty-five thousand. So, it's added myself automatically because I'm the applicant, I'm the one who's logged in. But I need to, I'm required to add a contractor and an owner. Okay, so I'm going to look for a contractor, and we're going to use Isaac Rooker. There we go, yes, Isaac, right, Isaac Rooker. And that's my contractor, line Gonzalez, I'm going to add him in there. Now, I'm going to add an owner. We can search a person, or we can search a company. In this case, we're searching for a company. Okay, here's your range. So, I've added the people. Uh, in connection to this permit, we click next. And more information.
So, on a permit, you've got to have the property owner, you have, sometimes you're going to have a contact, additional contact, but you also have to have a contractor. Not unless it's an owner-built permit, which in that case, he'll say owner-built permit.
Some permits require additional information. This is not one of those cases, so you don't have anything to fill in, so we're just going to go ahead and click next.
This is the section where they're going to start adding the documents that they need to add as part of the permit package.
These are the working guys. These would be the plans, the product approvals, the drawings, not the contractor's licenses if they need to update or permit applications.
Madam Mayor, can I ask you a question? So, do they have to have special scanning equipment in order to do this?
So, what they have to do is they'll have to have the, either the drawings electronically made by the design professionals, or they'll have to scan them to have it ready in their computer to be able to upload. Yes, ma'am.
And these are all PDF files?
Yes.
So, a PDF file. Um...
You can go to a lot of places around town and they'll scan large sheets for you.
Okay, so I've added my...
In the event that they cannot find a place, they can always come to us and we can do it for them too, so.
Now, these are supporting documents. He's going to, I'm applying the permit application, and he also needs to update the local business tax, so we're going to go ahead and do that. And I'm there at summary, and I just go through, make sure that's the correct address, the correct permit type, my contacts, and then it gives me an estimated fees. Um, that will be due at the end, and it will show the documents I have uploaded.
And then, now, once they hit, once they hit submit, everything will go in into our system. They'll get a notification saying your document has been submitted, okay? And that's when the whole process of the reviews and all that starts. At that time, we're receiving, and we'll start doing our reviews. The good thing about this is that everybody that is required to review it will have access immediately to be able to review those documents, and it will minimize the amount of time that it has to go from one reviewer to the other. So, the intent of this, currently, we're taking anywhere from ten to fifteen business days to review. The idea on this is to be able to do everything lasting five days. So, that's where it is.
And I'm excited about it. So, once something is approved, will it be noted also on the site?
Absolutely, yeah.
Great.
Once we review it and we approve it, those are modifications, and the permit is approved. They'll be able to, they'll be able to pay the fees, we'll generate an invoice. They'll be able to pay the fees. Once the fees are paid, they'll be able to upload their documents. And they'll have it on site and all that, they don't have to come here whatsoever unless they want to.
You can print out the permit right from...
Right from the site.
Okay, fantastic.
Yeah. And in addition to this, the program also, we have the iPads that we use when we go out in the field. And there, you're able to enter all the information. We're even sending emails out to the contractors, letting them know, hey, your inspection passed, or it was denied, or whatever reason, and that way, it gives them immediate access to the information that they need to have. We're extremely excited about it, I hope that you guys are too.
No, this is fantastic, and it's what the public had been, you know, asking for, but I know it will also make, hopefully make your, you know, job easier too. Our exit, so I'm like currently going through a process. Would it be in here yet, or like if ones that, or is only new ones that are initiated in here in the system?
The ones that are initiated here are going to go through the entire process. What happened on yours, if you have an active process, you'll be able to view online everything that is going on with your permit.
All right, great.
Who has it, or whatever comments they have. Because before, what happened was if everything was manually done, it was very difficult for us to give you, like, say, for example, an electrical rejection comment, one day, and then the next day have to give it to the other one. So, we had to give you everything at once. This way, you're going to be able to see it and start working on those comments and get them ready.
All right, thank you. To Sean's point, do we need to, if you're currently in a process, do you need to go in and input your information, or it's already in the system?
So, your information, if we already have, you know, your contractor's information, or owner's information, it's already there. As a matter of fact, through the GIS system, what we're doing, we're doing the regular upgrades, so we can capture, if a new buyer comes in and all that, we capture that information already on the system.
Okay, wonderful, and it's up and running now? It's live?
It is currently running. We're doing, while we're doing this, you know, this next couple of months, we're going to be limited to the amount of permits that we have in here now, which is basically, the permits that we're doing as expedited permits, roofing, windows, driveways, and so forth. We're working right now on the portion of the entire thing where we want to do, you know, like a complete project, where you have signed and sealed plans.
Mm-hmm.
So, what we're doing is, through the program that we have for plan reviews, is we have to make sure that we can verify the engineer's signature. And that's what we're working on right now.
Okay.
Hopefully, we're going to have a workshop. As a matter of fact, I'd like to have it scheduled for September the tenth, which is going to be a Tuesday. I was going to do it the first week of September, that's a holiday weekend, so I put it back for the second week in September, and that's when I want to do a workshop, where we're going to invite our residents, contractors, business owners, whoever wants to come in and take a look at it and, you know, follow the process.
And I'm sure our new communications, the young lady who's communications, will get that distributed out through the village. Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, I have a question. So, Arlenis, could you show the online payments? Just show that page, how that's done, or is it not live yet?
No, no, it is live. Um, when you saw the estimated fees, once you go into your permit,
Right.
um, there is an invoice, and you also have your permit number. You will go here to online payments, and you don't need to be logged in for that, so anyone can pretty much do that. And you will enter your invoice number, your permit number, the amount that's due, and then your credit card information. And you will get a notification that a payment has been made.
Making it easy.
Oh, yes, I'm very excited.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you all.
It's amazing.
This is part of a team effort that was put together, you know, by everybody, and we really appreciate everybody's support on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, if we could move the Historic Preservation Board report to the end of the meeting. Ms. Nina Corman is running a little bit late.
It's no problem. Having said that, why don't we take out of order item twelve A, a supplemental item that, that our vote we need to take?
Okay. Applications here from Stephanie Pavolini, Barry Pearl, appointments to the code enforcement board. There are two vacancies, and this is a continuation from the June meeting. There are two terms, one year term expiring September twenty twenty, and one three-year term expiring September twenty twenty-two. The applicants have introduced themselves at the last meeting. I don't know if the council would like to hear from them again. The ballots are located in the upper right-hand corner. You'll see two fields, one for the three-year term and one for the one-year term, and you can vote accordingly.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, just for record, did you send an email regarding this vote about the desire for term preferences or something?
That is correct. I'm sorry, I emailed earlier today to the council and to the village manager and the village attorney. The applicant Stephanie Pavolini has requested to serve the one-year term, and then Mr. Barry Pearl has expressed interest in the three-year term.
Thank you.
Okay, congratulations to Mr. Barry Pearl, who was appointed to the three-year term, and then Stephanie Pavolini to the one-year term.
Thank you both.
I promise you will not be disappointed.
Thank you, and thank you both for stepping up to serve. Greatly appreciate your participation.
Thank you both.
It's a big deal. Thank you, and thank you both for stepping up to serve. Greatly appreciate your participation.
Thank you both.
It's a big deal.
Public comments?
We'll move on to public comments. If you're here to make a public comment today, please state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you. If anyone cares to step to the podium?
Hello, well, first of all, thank you for your vote of confidence. I'm very excited to serve. I'm Stephanie Pavolini, and I live at nine four two five Northwest Second Court. I was at the last meeting, and there was a presentation on changing the bulk pickup and the presentation on the trash collection in general. I just wanted to make a comment about it. Living on the west side, we don't have alleyways, and so immediately after that meeting, I started thinking about what that would entail if we were to change specifically the bulk pickup schedule. And I was actually walking my dog one morning, and I noticed that a lot of my neighbors had bulk trash outside. It's one thing if we change it and we're able to kind of hide it away in the alleyway behind us, but it's completely different if there is no alleyway. And I know that when I walked my dog that morning, it stood out to me. So, just a comment on that, and moving forward, I know there's going to be a workshop, and we're going to bring it up for discussion, but I really wanted to state that it would affect in a different way if we were to change it for those of us that don't have alleyways. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have more public comment?
Hello, Mayor.
Hello.
Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Wesley Castellanos, eight seven five Northeast, Ninety-Second Street. I just want to just reiterate with the presentation of the e-permitting. I'm a licensed architect and a licensed general contractor, and I have used that system before, and I find it very easy to use and very efficient, so I thank you for putting it into the system here, so it's going to work very well. Thank you.
Any other public comment? No other, no other public comments, public comment session is now closed, and we'll move on to the consent agenda.
In the routine set of statutory matters are not expected to require discussion or review, items will be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by any member of the council, that item must be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. If the public wishes to speak on a matter on the consent agenda, they must inform the village clerk prior to the start of the meeting. They will be recognized to speak prior to the approval of the consent agenda. Item six A, approval of the July second, twenty nineteen, village council meeting minutes. Item six B, a resolution of the village council of Miami Shores Village, Florida, creating budget amendment number three to the fiscal year twenty eighteen dash twenty nineteen, operating budgets, transferring nine hundred eighty-seven thousand, four hundred thirteen dollars from the excise tax fund to the general fund, and transferring nine hundred eighty-seven thousand, four hundred thirteen from the general fund to the capital projects for the construction of the pool project. Staff on this item is the finance director, and I have not received any requests from the public to pull any of the items, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any comments? Do I have...
No, I was just going to say I'd make a motion.
Okay.
And move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a second. With that, the consent agenda passes. Thank you.
Item seven A, ordinance of the village council of Miami Shores Village, Florida, providing for the levy and collection of non-advalorem assessments for solid waste collection and disposal services, providing for an increase in the levy and collection of non-advalorem assessments, providing for the continuation of the assessments from year to year, providing for certification of the solid waste collection non-advalorem assessments using the uniform tax book collection method, providing for amendments to chapter nine, garbage and trash, article three, section nine dash forty-two, schedule of the village code of ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Staff on this item is the village manager. Madam Mayor, this is a public hearing.
I will open the floor to public comment now, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, city village manager, city attorney. My name is Ken Rivera, and I'm here representing Waste Pro this evening. We're located at one seven three zero two Pines Boulevard in Pembroke Pines, Florida. A little brief history about Waste Pro, Florida. Our headquarters is in Longwood, Florida, and is managed by the southeastern team of our owner, John Jennings, our CEO and owner, and our regional vice president, Russell Mackey, myself, and a few others. We have a direct responsibility of over a hundred and sixty municipalities, responsible for over two million services to residents, thirty-five thousand businesses in the state of Florida, and we've become the largest, fastest-growing privately-held solid waste provider in the southeast United States. Like I mentioned before, our local team is led by our regional vice president, Russell Mackey, which covers from Port Cheong Lucy all the way down to Sweetwater, Florida, and that would include also North Miami and Village of Biscayne Park. I'm here today to offer a different perspective on your solid waste item today, and that is a perspective of improvement. I have reviewed the item tonight, I read the study, I read the recommendations, and I can say that in my professional opinion that your village can do, can get more for a lot less. Your report demonstrates that the escalating increases over the next eight fiscal years, a resident will be paying approximately ninety-six dollars per month for the services that they're getting today, without any additional services by the year two thousand twenty-eight. And that is shown on the study that was provided, and that's an annual number, and in two thousand twenty-eight, of a thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. Neighboring cities like North Miami, Village of Biscayne Park, get much more service on the solid waste, on the recycling, and on the yard waste in bulk, and they all pay about three hundred and fifty-seven dollars respectively, and three hundred and thirty-seven dollars in the Village of Biscayne Park. I believe the city has a great opportunity to really study to see what options are out there in the marketplace. And again, in my professional opinion, given the closeness as to when this has to be approved due to regulations, I believe that in most cases, you'll be able to find that there is absolute one hundred percent capabilities of providing additional services, additional value to the residents, and at much, in most cases, half the cost. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I ask a quick question?
Thank you, yes.
Have you registered as a lobbyist with our village clerk?
Oh, no, I did not.
We want to, before you leave tonight, we do talk to the clerk and get into that.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Any further comments, public comment? Mr. Manager, or comments from our council, Mr. Manager, we'll start with you.
Yes, ma'am. As we've given the presentation two times before, we have our consultant here tonight, Mr. Nick Smith. If you have any specific questions that he can answer or I can answer, we'd be happy to address them for you. You know, again, in my professional opinion, I would have to disagree with the gentleman. I know for a fact, we give much more service than our neighboring communities, particularly in the area of bulk trash. You know, we give as much bulk service as you want, as often as you want. I mean, we're out there all the time picking up bulk trash. As the young lady said, when you have a property that does not have an alley, you know, we're out there constantly picking up bulk trash, which is a big thing in our community. Our community is kept a lot, and again, no offense to our surrounding neighbors, but you drive into our community, you know there's something different in our community. It's kept up very nice, and one of the reasons why is with all the landscaping that our residents do, they take great pride in their property. We have a much more active code enforcement department than our neighbors have, which also causes a lot more trimming, generates a lot more bulk trash, and we're out there picking it up all the time. So, with that said, if there's any specific questions, you know, we looked at, we looked at different things. You know, one of the things that I would agree with, if you want to go to a one-armed bandit, pull the can out to the front. Eventually, you will save money over the way we pick up garbage, absolutely. But in discussions in previous meetings and with our residents in the past, they did not want to go to the container-type one-armed bandit system. They liked their service the way it was now, and that's how we developed the price schedule that we have now and what we're proposing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager. Vice Mayor Birch?
Yes, I just would address the clerk and the manager at this time to ask if it's realistic to provide a placeholder for the meeting that would be appropriately timed in a year, so that we can make sure that as a council, we review the various items that are subject to such fluctuation, and unprecedented fluctuation in the past year. Since twenty eighteen, we have seen immense changes in the recycling market as well as the waste market. So, we would like to be responsible to our taxpayers by saying, you know, we want to implement an increase as advised, but we also want to be responsible and have that review, and to be sure that we have that scheduled. So, I would like to go on record as saying that that's my preference, and perhaps my colleagues would feel more comfortable if we were to have another review since we're facing a larger increase in twenty twenty. Among the increases that we're going to have, it's not a steady lower rate. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Birch. Any other comments? Thank you, Vice Mayor Birch. Other comments? Mr. Lefredo?
Madam Mayor, I was going to offer, I don't think there's any sentiment for it, but I was going to offer a compromise of two 7.5% increases over each of the next two years instead of two 15% increases over the next two years with a re opener after the second year of the way we reopen police. But that would be my comments.
Mr. Lefredo, can you repeat that? Two, seven-year?
Two, 7.5% increases as opposed to two 15% increases with a re opener after two years. That would still give us time if we needed to come out with large purchases of equipment to come in with another increase after the two-year re opener if we needed to, while still covering that curve for the next two years.
Mr. Manager, with that suggestion, how does that impact going forward? Is that a great difference?
I'm going to let our consultant tell you the, I believe we come up short is the short answer.
Good evening. My name is Nick Smith of Public Resources Management Group. We're actually now called Draftalis. But to address the comment of two 7.5% increases over the next two years, we did take a look at a few different increase scenarios to see where the system would end up. And essentially the two 15% are just to get the system back on track and be sustainable. If we did two 7.5% increases, we would still be using reserves and eventually the fund would run out of money.
Would it run out prior to the two years or post the two years?
Two to three years.
But you can't say that it would run out within the two years, correct? So two to three years, right? You don't have concrete.
It would delay of capital. There may be a few things that could potentially push it out, but you know, the fund would run out of money.
Mr. Meltz?
Good eye, Madam Mayor. Seeing me over here.
Yes.
Thank you. Not particularly a question for you yet, Nick, but it may get there. So I hear some trepidation amongst the council and about, I guess, the percentage of the increases over the time. And I'm not particularly sure, but if we approve this as is tonight, is there anything that prevents us from next month, in three months or in four months, doing some sort of further evaluation and study of our overall waste program to see if there are other alternatives to be able to reduce the cost and to then maybe revisit it? I mean, what I'm uncomfortable doing is not preparing for the future. So everybody says, well, maybe we can do this or people suggest, oh, there's always something better out there. We hired a consultant. We have our own in-house experts. They're telling us what we need to maintain service. So if you all are interested in maybe revisiting that later, I'm open to anything to reduce costs while keeping our levels. But maybe the most prudent course of action is to approve as is and then initiate, request staff or whomever to come up maybe with some other viable alternatives. I don't think, and this is what I'm asking maybe Mr. Seraphin, does anything prevent us from revisiting this of what we're approving tonight if it does go forth?
Yes and no. One piece of what you're approving tonight is to certify to the tax assessor or tax collector, and I'll yield to Holly on this, but we face a deadline to let them know what to put on the tax bills for next year. Now, nothing prohibits you from changing it starting the following year. If you do nothing, what you've adopted tonight automatically takes care of the following year, but you could change that. You have time before the deadline for the following year.
Okay, that's exactly my thought, is that this is what we need based on what's been presented by our consultant, experts in the field and our own staff. I believe extremely strongly we need to approve it. And then if we find a better alternative, then I'm sure the residents won't be upset if we reduce the fees at some point in the future to give them better or same service. But the prudent approach is to move forward based on our statutory obligations.
Madam Mayor, can I ask a question of the expert? For a typical residential home, what's the dollar value of 7.5%? Right, I vaguely remember you gave us a number for the 15% bump. I'm just wondering what half of the...
It's like 111 and it would be about 55. I can be off by five or 10 bucks, but that's what we're talking about.
So that's the bump monthly or yearly?
Yearly.
Yeah, so the difference would be an extra $55 savings. Is that about right?
Let me defer to him.
Yeah.
I think it went from 707 to 821 or something like that.
Yeah, something like that. I'm sorry, I didn't think it would be that tough a question.
About $4.40 per month.
I wouldn't expect you to. I wouldn't ask it for your benefit. I was asking for theirs.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion that we pass the resolution as written.
Thanks.
I have one more question for you before you sit down, before we move on that. And our fees, are they covering waste materials exclusively? So our fees, our fees that we're charging, this is all encompassing vehicles, recycling, wastes, the fee breakdown and personnel.
It's the entire system.
In its totality.
Yes.
That's what I'm asking. Okay. Okay, thank you.
I?
Oppose?
No.
To that point, and I'm not sure if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Seraphin, but back to Vice Mayor Birch's point of revisiting this one year from now. Is that something we can put forward now and make sure that's on the calendar one year from now, assuming we're going to be asking for more information?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Finance Director is saying nine months from now.
Nine months?
So allow us to, if we have to adjust the budget process, so when we get into the budget process, we've had time to crunch the numbers already, so.
You also don't want to bump up against the county deadlines for that year's taxes.
That's correct.
So that would be the April 21st, 2020 council meeting.
Thank you.
Item 8A, a resolution of the Village Council of Miami Shores Village, Florida, setting tentative operating and debt service, ad valorem village levies for fiscal year 2019-2020, beginning October 1st, 2019 and ending September 30th, 2020, setting the time, date and place for the two public hearings for the fiscal year 2019-2020 and operating capital budgets and proposed ad valorem military rates. Staff on this item is the Finance Director.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, ma'am, if I may. At our last Tuesday's budget workshop session, by consensus, you all approved the millages that are included in this resolution. Ms. Hugdul, our Finance Director, has got to transmit this to the county tomorrow. So, which is why we asked for consensus last Tuesday. And basically what you're doing is passing the resolution on the items that we discussed at last Tuesday night's meeting. So if you could pass this resolution, she will get it off to the county tomorrow morning.
Thank you. Do we have any comments? Do I have a motion?
I'd like to move that we approve the resolution.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
As the council will be in recess for the month of August, the next meeting of the Village Council will be held at Village Hall on Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019, immediately following the first public budget hearing, which will commence at 6:00 PM. And would you rather receive the newsletter via email? Residents can sign up to receive the monthly newsletter by email. Supply, simply use the contact us link on the front page of our website. Be sure your email includes your name and mailing address. The communications specialists will close care of the rest. Please remember to visit the village website for more information on village events, departments and to receive agenda notifications. Village Council comments?
Comments? We'll start to my left, Mr. Lefredo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I would like to thank my prior council colleagues and the body as a whole for whatever they did to get the train whistles to stop. Because we've got a crying baby in the house. You know, my baby granddaughter lives with us temporarily. So we get woven up a little bit, but thank God we don't get the freight train, the rumbling freight train at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning that goes on for an hour. So I just want to thank that prior council for whatever they did because it's really great. The other thing I wanted to mention somewhat topical to tonight, through the gracious efforts of the village manager, I was able to tour the recycling facility, Waste Connections, on Friday morning with him. And I would strongly urge, if it's possible technically, for the new media director and maybe a hired private cameraman to go out and do some kind of a videotape for social media for the citizens because it was completely different than what I expected. I mean, completely different. They're overwhelmed with garbage out there. 70% contamination, the gentleman said, and they're trying really hard, but the backlog is enormous. There's a, anyway, that's my recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman Lefredo. Mr. Brady?
No, I just wanted to, you know, thank the council and the public for a great first half of the year and that even though we're on recess, if the public has any issues that come up, please feel free or don't hesitate to contact us at all and see you all in September.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Birch.
I would like to thank Commissioner Edmondson's office for the deliria, the happiness that I have heard from people who, about the train horns as well. People are just, almost can't believe it because they've suffered a long time with that racket. And I'd also like to mention that Commissioner Edmondson might be able to help us with this lighting on Second Avenue project. And I know that we're all very interested in that and we don't necessarily have the budget for it, but perhaps in the future, if we are, we do get the reimbursement by FEMA, we would be able to fit some money into the budget, but we would really appreciate the county's cooperation. We have a county street here where we have a budding downtown. We would love to be able to light up at a relatively reasonable cost. And we'd like to work with the county on that. So thank you very much to everyone. Thanks, Mayor Wagler, for doing a great job. You have a throat thing. And I do appreciate the consultant's work because it did help to give us direction. And I appreciate everyone's comments, so thank you.
Mr. Meltz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, so we just approved the raise in your garbage rates and I'm not happy about it. But there's only one solution, is stop making so much trash, okay? And I say it not like one-tenth jokingly, and I support what Councilman Lefredo said about going to our waste supplier or Waste Pro or just seeing what we do. It's disgusting. It's horrendous. It's offensive. And the only solution is to stop producing garbage. That's why I'm so sharply focused on this bag fee, one of the issues that we have here, of trying to stop the behavior. And I need the support of the public and I need the support of the council to try and do something here at a grassroots level to change the future of the way we act and the way we desecrate this earth. When we just raise garbage fees, it doesn't do anything. It just costs you more to take away the refuse. We need to stop producing more. We need people, for instance, at Publix to bring their own bags. It's the start that we're focusing on. It's difficult to get, to change behavior. But recycling, as many of you are learning, is a myth. And we can't put our eggs in that basket anymore. Most of you now know that there's nowhere to put our glass bottles. So when you drink that wine or that Coca-Cola or that Budweiser, it's going to the dump and we're paying large amounts of money for it. So we need to find some other ways of dealing with our problem other than paying for it. So we're still working with the village manager, we hope to, and the village attorney. We hope to have some solution when we come back in session, some sort of aggressive, creative presentation of trying to change the way we think about reusability and focusing Miami Shores at the forefront of changing our behavior towards our environment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Meltz. I would like to thank the Building Department for working really hard to put the electronic permitting online, getting us up and running on that. I think it's very important to expedite these processes and be able to see your permits and applications online. I think that is going to take us a long way in moving us forward into the future. So kudos to them. But along the lines with the garbage rates, I'm not happy about it either. I will be adamant about seeing, bringing this back in one year or nine months, excuse me, Holly, nine months, so that we can see if there are some alternatives or something we could be doing different to minimize this cost to our residents. Having said that, we have excellent services. So if we can somehow find a balance to all that to help us go forward, that'd be great. I'd like to see some comparisons to some other municipalities in town. You know, our rates haven't gone up in 11 years, so here we are. I second what Mr. Meltz just said about our, you know, I just went to my neighbor's house two days ago. She had like 10 pizza boxes sitting out there and I had to explain to her, we can't, you gotta, in fact, I took your pizza boxes and I'll just put them where they're supposed to go. So we need to work collectively on our triast dissemination because this issue is not going to get any easier. It's just not. It's not going to get any easier. We have to address it head on. And while we're addressing it, I'd like to always be looking at alternatives. Two-thirds of our vehicle fleet is going to have to be replaced. Well, it's a lot of money. What are the alternatives to that? I don't know. But we should be looking at that. So I expect in nine months when we come back, Mr. Meltz will have his paper banned. I'd support that fully. Or paper, no, the fees, fees, plastic bag fees. And we'll continue to work with the community on minimizing our waste. So that's something we have to do collectively. And I hope people start taking that serious and we'll have to change our train of thought and maybe we have to cut down on the bottles of wine we drink per evening. I'm not sure. But it's an ongoing issue and it will continue. Box wine. We were going to have someone from the Historic Preservation Board do a report, but Ms. Corman has not arrived yet. Yes, Mr. Meltz?
I know I almost used my three minutes, but I did have one different topic. It came up last time where we as a council had asked staff to create a report on the viability of solar on village-owned properties. And my understanding, that report is done. And I don't know, is it on the website or anything? No? It's around?
It's around. It's not.
So.
It has to be talked about before we put it on the website.
Okay, so it's, the reason I'm bringing it up is that at the last meeting, we were told by the Library Board about the construction of the new wing. And the thought of putting solar on a village property, I think is a fantastic idea. And I'm all for pushing that, but you don't put lipstick on a pig, right? And so if we were to put solar on this roof of this building, which needs to be changed probably within the next five years, it's counterproductive. So you would ask yourself, does the village have a new building going up soon? And there is a new building going up soon. So I don't want to wait six weeks to the next meeting. And I just want to put it out there and if you all think it's something worthwhile, while it's still being designed across the street, wouldn't it make sense to think about adding solar to the new part of the library? So I don't know if they had considered that originally, but timing is everything. So I just put that out there as a consideration before things get too far.
Nice, Vice Mayor Birch. What comment?
Is it still in the design phase?
We're in the, the contractor's in the design phase. It's, again, it's... It's, again, it's absolutely possible. Just takes money. You have to write a check. And, you know, there's a certain years of payback. And what we would have to look at for that particular building is to see whether or not, it's, it's just an addition. So, whether or not the addition has enough roof square footage facing the proper direction to capture enough sunlight to power the entire library.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Lefredo, yes.
Yeah, this is something that goes back a lot of years, but I was going to ask Mr. Brady about this privately, but the village attorney said, ask him on the record.
Sorry, good luck.
Okay, Mr. Brady is our emissary to the Y-Green group, and so he's more in, he gets more of the upcoming stuff and technical advantages. Years ago, I had heard about a, a technology. I don't know if it's progressed or not. At the time, it wasn't progressed enough, but where you would use solar film on driveways to create solar power. And I just want him to check and find out how far that technology has progressed. That's all. So, I've done it on the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, to your question about the solar panels, and forgive me, I'm not an expert in this. The, the panels would need to power the entire library, or just the, the wing?
You, you could do...
Can you do it with just the wing?
You could do just the wing.
So, that is an option?
That is an option, absolutely. You could do just the wing.
Right, which is...
But again, I'm, I know our residents would say, why didn't you do the whole thing while you're at it? So, that's, but, but yes, we can certainly look at the wing.
Vice Mayor Birch?
If that's, if that's what you want to do.
You know, there's significant capital outlay to doing solar power for your roof. So, uh, many of us have not looked into it. I mean, we've looked into it, but we haven't, we haven't jumped. Councilman Brady, I believe, does have solar power in his home, and, um, and what, and showcased his home as part of a tour, uh, a couple of years ago, so. Um, but it's, the rest of us are sort of trying to bank, uh, the savings for it. So, this would be a small, this could be a small demonstrator project where we, as a village, show that initiative and effort um, at a time that we're already putting out, um, the money, so I would...
Okay, I'll, I'll speak to the contractor in the morning.
And let us know, get us some feedback on that, because if we can just do a section of it, I think, I think Vice Mayor Birch is correct. You got to start somewhere, and this would be a great start. And it would be a show of goodwill from us that we are looking into options and alternatives.
You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and folks.
Any other comments from the council?
Put off the Historic Preservation Presentation to the next meeting.
Correct.
Madam Mayor, if I may, one last comment since we're going into recess. I just wanted to let you know and the community know that our grant writer secured a forty-thousand-dollar grant for us for a technical assistant, assistance grant for the, um, Shores Estates subdivision, the area behind Kmart. We're, uh, we just received bid, um, RFQs back for an engineering study for a sewer system back there. So, this will pay for perhaps a large portion of that, so hats off to our grant writer.
Thanks, congratulations.
Congratulations. It's good news. Anything else? Okay, there being no further business before the council, we are therefore adjourned. Thanks for coming out this evening, you all.